Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if you're able and could rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd appreciate it.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caudill.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, our next item of business is public items, and members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. We have no one signed up, but that doesn't mean there isn't somebody that didn't know way to sign up. Does anyone out there would like to make a public comment? Don't rush forward all at the same time. Okay? All right. I see no one coming forward, so we will close out public comments. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. All items under this heading are considered to be routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda, considered separately. Does anyone have anything that would like to be removed? Or, okay, I see nobody want anything removed. I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve Consent Agenda Items 1 and 2.
Okay, we have a motion. We're saying second. Okay, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudill.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, we're just, we're running along. It looks like we're already up to the mayor's report, and I am excited to say that we have another proclamation. And so I would like to just read this proclamation itself, and it says, "Whereas, the month of June is designated as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and it commemorates the Stonewall Rebellion that occurred during the weekend of June 27th through the 29th, 1969, in New York City, New York, that gave birth to the modern lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, LGBT, civil rights movement. The month of June also marks a time when all those committed to justice, equality, celebrate the notable achievements and outstanding service that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and other LGBTQ+ Americans make to our city, state, and nation. And whereas LGBTQ+ pride is defined as a positive stance against discrimination and violence toward lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and others to promote their self-affirmation, dignity, equality rights, increase their visibility as a social group, build community, and celebrate sexual diversity and gender variance. And whereas individually and collectively, members of the city Mariam's LGBTQ+ community contribute greatly to neighborhood revitalization, economic vitality, arts and culture, and the social fabric of our city, county, state, and country. And whereas the city of Mariam prides itself on its inclusiveness and protects its residents from discrimination and harassment based on race, color, sex, religion, disability, age, marital status, place of birth, families with children, sexual orientation, or national origin, and we are committed to continued social progress in the cause of human rights, celebrating the great diversity of our community. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Mariam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 20, 2022, as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and the city of Mariam, and urge our citizens to join in the ending prejudice everywhere it may exist, respect the rights of all people, and celebrate the diversity and richness of our city and county. Proclaim this 13th day of June 2022." Bob Pape, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Okay. We appreciate that being put together by our Madam Clerk. Okay, moving along, council items. The first item on our council items this evening is consider amendment to the redevelopment agreement with the Mariam North Bell LLC for construction of a Chipotle restaurant at 8800 Shawnee Mission Parkway, and it looks like we have Mr. Engel at the podium. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, the next item is, as the mayor said, is consider an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Mariam North Bell for the construction of a Chipotle restaurant at 8800 Shawnee Mission Parkway. As background, on January 24th, 2022, City Council entered into a redevelopment agreement with Mariam North Bell LLC for the construction of a Chipotle at the previously vacant Taco Bell at 8800 Shawnee Mission Parkway. What that RDA did is it set the maximum TIF amount at $300,000 to partner with them. Primarily, we talked about some drainage issues that were on the site that were adversely impacting the property behind it, which was the library property. So in anticipation of the library eventually selling and redeveloping, we felt like if they were going to be in there tearing that site up, it made a lot of sense for them to go ahead and address some of those drainage issues that they may not have otherwise dealt with. What that RDA did, what that redevelopment agreement did, is it not only spelled out the amount of funding that the city would partner with, which was $300,000, it spelled out how those funds would be dispersed, the first half being upon the teardown of Taco Bell. Once the Taco Bell was removed from the site, we felt like that was a good benchmark because once the Taco Bell is removed, it becomes a pretty valuable site. The site work of removing the building is done, so if we hadn't paid any money up to that point, at that point, it seemed like it made a lot of sense. That's not uncommon in some of our agreements. And then the second half, when the Taco Bell opens, once it becomes operational, that's when the second half of those TIF payments would be reimbursable. We also spelled out in Section 502 that no payments would be made if the previous past-due taxes at all property within the TIF district had been paid by June 1 of 2022. It was made very clear that past-due taxes and all property within the TIF was to mean the Kmart, as you will recall. When we started these conversations with Drake in, well, Drake in 2020, November 2020, these conversations at Taco Bell in about October, November of '21, both those things were kind of bouncing back and forth at the council level, and it came to light in the conversations with Drake that the property taxes had were not current at the Kmart site. So that was something that the council was very interested in getting included in the RDA. So even though this was a document that was being controlled on one particular site, the taxes being paid at another particular site were important to the council, so we included those in the agreement that Block and Company, well, representing Mariam North Bell, agreed to and signed. On May 31st, staff sent a reminder email to Block and Company that those taxes were due the following day, and later that evening received the attached email requesting an extension. Staff shared that staff does not have the ability to extend, and as far as we could tell, the deal was going to be null on the first if the taxes weren't paid, but that we would put it on the agenda on June 13th, and Mr. Block could come, as he has this evening, to share his perspective with the council on this particular site. So I'm going to turn it over to him, let him share his perspective on the site with you, then I will come back and I will share some of the options that counsel or that staff sees as being perhaps a way forward with this, that are included in your packet. I do want to make sure that it's clear that it's in the opinion of staff and bond counsel. We've got Joe Serrano with Cutec Rock here, that the current RDA has been breached, it is not enforced anymore, it's not enforceable anymore, meaning that the city is not obligated to provide any sort of incentives per that RDA with Mr. Block, whether he builds the Chipotle, doesn't build the Chipotle, pays the taxes at Kmart, or does not pay the taxes at Kmart. So I want to just make sure that that is our perspective, that may be different from Mr. Block's, but that's, wanted you to understand that that's where we are. So when we start exploring options or considering options, that is, that is kind of the lay of the land, and that is the origin point of where all of these options come from that staff will present. That being said, if there's any questions for me, before I turn it over to Mr. Block, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Neal, go ahead.
Okay, just to be clear, I'm trying to remember the exact amount of the back, taxes of 600 and something thousand on the, on the Kmart site.
Sure. Currently due is $667,000. So there is, the second half of, second half of 2018, all of '19 and '20 would be considered delinquent, then the other ones are due, which would be the '21 taxes, those are still, they were due in April, but they have not been, they have not been paid either.
Right, okay.
And those are at Kmart, not the Chipotle property.
Right, yeah, no, I understand that. What, I can, I can ask a couple more questions to Mr. Block, he probably knows the answers to them better than I do, so that was the one I wanted to clarify first.
So, Neil, so have any questions for Mr. Engel? Okay. Turn it over to Mr. Block.
Okay, Mr. Block. Okay? Just for the record, if you would state your name, and you can give your business address itself for the, for the record.
David Block, 605 West 47th Street, Kent City, Missouri, 64112.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Go ahead.
Thank you for having me here today. Appreciate your time, and y'all probably have some questions about what's going on, so go ahead and ask them. We can start that way if you'd like, or we can do it later.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Neal, go ahead.
Well, first of all, when did you buy the Kmart property? Was it 2013? Sometime in 2013?
Um, I don't recall that date. I didn't buy the Kmart.
Well, okay.
And that's been a sad perception that's been misquoted in the local newspaper and others.
Well, so can you explain that to me?
Yes, I can. So, let me think here. I've worked with the city for, I don't know, how many years have you been here? Okay, so probably 15 before that, and have brought multiple transactions to this city to upgrade the kind of retailers and restaurants, hotels as well, over the past probably 30 years, including the auto mall, which your staff was involved in, and filling that last hole there last year and turning it into a taxable event. I was involved for the ownership in all of these transactions, and the ownership is, in most cases, a group of local investors, very similar to all you folks up there. You know, there's a number of lawyers and accountants and just regular business people, a doctor's wife, and other folks that are involved in multiple of these buildings, and they're all owned. For example, that one there is owned by 119th Street Metcalf, Windsor LLC, and Three Trails Two LLC. That's three tics, three different investments that sold something somewhere else and invested into that property. It's the same thing on the Taco Bell. On the Dick's Sporting Goods that we brought to town, that was just a real estate transaction. The Taco Bell relocation was just a real estate transaction. And so the auto mall, we actually bought, probably, I think it would be fair to say that saved the bankruptcy situation on the auto mall at the time, and myself and another major investor under an LLC group, DND LLC and another name, I can't remember right now, did that auto mall with Hendrix and Infinity and all the other guys over there. So over the years, I have always pursued upgrading the types of properties that are in this town, and I have worked through investors like you folks up here that say, "I want to invest in real estate, David, what can you put me in?" And so we form a limited liability company, and we go in and buy that property under that limited liability company. I see here, there's like six of them here right now. One of them would have been the, the Freddys. For those of you that were here back there, you probably remember the previous building, right? For those of you guys that were here at the time, and it was a Winstead's that ended up closed, and the property had been bought right, and so we came in, the group that owned that property, that property is owned by Restaurant Investors I-35 LLC, which was, again, a bunch of these doctors' wives, and doctors, and lawyers, and so on and so forth. And we redeveloped that property, and there was no public finance, there was no request for, was there any public finance? No. Okay. Okay. Was there any incentives? No. We didn't really need them on that. That was a particular building that we felt that building a new building there was going to bring a lot to the table for this city and this community. That's all we've ever tried to do, is bring something that's going to upgrade some of these older properties. And so the Kmart is the exact same situation.
Well, so I, I understand that you've got several partnerships in the form of LLCs.
Sure, yeah.
And Block and Company is, at some levels, the controlling partner, the master limited part, you know, the master part, or are?
No, no, they're just the leasing agent and the development advisor and agent. So we are just, kind of like you guys are, your council people that advise, and we are doing the same thing for these LLCs.
But you get some, you get some sort of a remuneration for providing those services, I would assume, and there's some sort of overriding document, agreement of some sort governing the LLC and the investment?
That is, there is an agreement there, and sometimes we get paid.
Yeah, okay.
Sometimes we don't.
No, I understand. The, but my question regarding that is, do these agreements, and specifically the Kmart agreement, contain provisions for the payment of property taxes?
Well, yeah, I mean, but in agreement, that would mean we'd go back to the partners and go, "Okay, guys, there's no income, so everybody pay your taxes." Now, the situation was that we were going to do an entertainment district, which your staff is familiar with. We worked on, I don't know how long, two years before COVID, on a lot of serious, beautiful deals that would have really changed the complexion of that Kmart. And then COVID showed up, and then Drake came in and they decided they were going to buy it, and they had a contract that went for about 10 months. Now, it's been, I don't know, 24 because of continued negotiations with the city. They were going to pay the taxes, we were going to pay the taxes. When they closed, we have continued because the city seems to want the transaction that he plans to put there. In fact, he came to us last week and asked for another 75 days extension on his contract until later this year, and that's what we've done. We've continued to work with him because he's into this development for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we, the ownership group that we represent, who we talked to all the owners, didn't feel it was right to just cut him off and say, "Done," and he was not going to pay the $600,000 in taxes. We want to pay the taxes, that partnership just doesn't have the income to pay the taxes. And if we did, we would have paid them. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions as well. So when were you made aware of the January 24th agreement that made the June 1st deadline for paying taxes?
Well, it came to my attention on what, the 20, what, the last day of May?
So the day before the deadline?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not saying I didn't know about it before.
So you did know about it before the deadline?
Well, back when it was agreed upon, I'm, I'm, yes.
In January?
Yeah, and I expected for the ownership, 119, Three Trails, and the other ownership, the three ownership groups that own that Kmart, they were let, they were all brought up to date that they would be paid when Drake closed, and then Drake asked for another extension. We had no prior knowledge that this was going to continue and continue on, so we thought they would be paid by March or April or May, okay?
So you assumed the risk of that?
Uh, you could, yeah, sure, absolutely, yeah. We assumed the risk, uh-huh.
When, was there, why was there confusion that the deadline was August 1st instead of June 1st? That was in the email that was provided to us. The owner thought the deadline was August 1st?
We just thought it was August 1st. It was an honest mistake.
Okay. Who owns Block DM Investment?
Block DM?
Mm-hmm.
I'm a partner in that.
You're a partner in that?
Uh-huh.
So Block DM Investment is listed as a partner. I believe it's the sole owner of Mariam Bell, oh, no, Mariam Corner LLC, and is an investor in the three, no, an investor also in 119 Metcalf slash Windsor LLC. Who owns Block Family Deals? Is that a trust, or is that also an LLC?
Well, that's a bunch of Block and Company folks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you a part of that? Do you know if you're part of Block Family Deals LLC?
I think I am.
Yeah.
Probably.
What about the, let me find one other. There was a Block Family Trust that I was going to look at as well. So you're part of the ownership group personally, then, over at the Kmart site?
I am part of the ownership group.
Okay, so.
I am part of the ownership in the LLCs that own these properties.
Right.
In some of the others.
Right.
And other property in Mariam.
I'm just setting expectations for who the owners of these places are, right? I don't see Ronnie Metzger.
The IHOP.
I don't see, I'm still, I'm still talking.
The IHOP, too.
Hold on just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't see Ronnie Metzger and Rusty Metzger here tonight. Aren't they the owners of Three Trails Two LLC?
Who?
Ronnie and Rusty Metzger? Aren't they the, they own more than 5% in each in Three Trails Two LLC?
Hmm.
Are they not here tonight?
Ronnie Metzger?
Yeah. Rusty Metzger and Ronnie Metzger are the owners of Three Trails Two LLC.
Okay. I don't know what they look like, and I don't know who they are.
One of them's the former Johnson County Election Commissioner, so he's probably pretty easy to find.
Okay, well, then if you don't see him, then he's not here.
What about, you're the sole owner of North Bell LLC, the company that owns 8800 Shawnee Mission Parkway?
Which, which one would that be?
The Taco Bell.
The Taco Bell? No.
North Bell LLC.
No, I'm not the sole owner.
Based on the, based on the Kansas Secretary of State records, you're the only person listed as an investor or owner 5%.
Mariam North Bell owns that. Mariam North Bell owns that property.
Yeah, Mariam North Bell.
I'm not even an owner. Mariam North Bell owns it.
Right, the LLC, but when you look at the Secretary of State records, let me pull them up here.
Uh-huh.
Mariam North Bell LLC Annual Report 1221. Members who own 5% or more of capital, David M. Block.
That would be me.
That's you. Okay, so you, you do own that, then?
No, I do not own that.
The LLC owns it, and you own the, you have more than 5%.
Now, you got it. There you go. That is correct.
Yeah, I understand how it works. You, you, you own the LLC that owns the company.
No, I don't own the LLC.
You have more than 5% or more capital of that LLC.
If you want to be specific.
Well, that's just what it said.
Is that what you're trying to do?
That's just what it says here. I'm just trying to clarify who owns what.
Who owns the property, then? Let's start there.
Mariam North Bell LLC.
And then it has partners.
You're the only one listed here.
And I'm one of those partners.
Yeah, you're the only one listed, so I guess you're the one.
Well, there are other partners, and they're not listed.
And they're not here, right?
They don't need to be here.
Okay.
They were not asked, did you ask someone else to be here? Any of you guys?
I'm just confirming who owns what.
No, and I'm just saying, if there was someone else that was asked to be here.
Sure.
Mitch, maybe?
I don't see Mitch.
Is he here?
No?
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm here, I'm here to talk about it, whatever you'd like.
I get it.
So is the point you're trying to make that I, David Block, who did multiple properties through LLCs in the city of Mariam for the last 30, 40 years, is a partner in some of these deals? I am.
Great, so I'm going to finish my questions first. So you were aware of the deal, the ownership group was aware of the deal, they, it sounds like, were they relying on the sale to, were they relying on the sale to Drake happening?
They were expecting it.
They were expecting it, but they weren't relying on it.
That would be fair, sure.
So, so they don't have the liquid income to pay their own taxes?
Um, well, there is no income except for the, you know, the ATM, and the, I think the Krispy Kreme's part of that, so that's the only income.
Right, so they don't have the funds to meet the agreement that we.
Right.
Agreed to.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so is the, is the issue that you guys forgot the date? Or is it that, because in the email, it says you forgot the date and want an extension, but then also lists that the issue's compounded by the ongoing delay that has occurred while the buyer of Kmart and the city worked through a redevelopment agreement?
The issue is we forgot the date.
Okay. So neither of these things.
Which we apologize for.
Can we be clear? You forgot the date, but when you signed and had the notarized document, you knew the date was June 1st?
I'm sure that we did.
Okay.
Okay.
With the expectation that it would be closed with Drake.
Did the ownership group know prior to the day before the due date that the taxes were going to be due?
Not any time near when they were due.
Okay.
So it was just an honest mistake.
Okay. Um, as far as the incentives go, and we're going to be discussing potential options tonight, why, knowing what's happened and what's transpired with the current deal, why should we give you incentives going forward on this project, knowing that you'll respect and trust the deadlines that we have in place?
Well, you know, I would say that that building could have been rented, as is, maybe 15, between 15 and 20 times, to local restaurant folks that were like one-store operators and that they were not very financially strong, and we believed that the best thing, based upon conversation with the staff, was to try and redevelop that property rather than try and just fill it with some local chicken or other kind of local restaurants that might be not there a year from now, or six months from now, or two years from now, and we wanted to build something that would look a lot better, that would upgrade the look of that property, and increase the visibility of the city.
So we have, and you made a deal with like a wildly successful national food chain to put it near one of the busiest interchanges in Kansas City, right?
That's fair.
And we're, we're providing, we agreed to provide incentives if, as far as the TIF district goes, just for helping with the drainage issues on the site or TIF eligible expenses.
That is correct.
And the project's moving forward without those reimbursements at the time being?
Well, we're expecting to get them.
Well, currently, they're not, you know, they're not there.
Right. We would, we would hope that you guys would see your way to reinstate them and extend them.
Okay, David, go ahead.
Okay, well, so, to reiterate, we, we went through a lot of soul searching to, and particularly, it bothered me substantially from the beginning that there were, you know, $667,000 of taxes unpaid, and yet we, we, as stewards of the, of the public finance for the city of Mariam, were asked to approve $300,000 to help develop, the way you and your investor groups wanted it to be developed, a, a site that essentially, you're asking for about half, a little, little less than half, what would be the, the tax liability across the street that hadn't been paid since 2018, so that goes back, you know, four years. It, it seems to me that we tried to make it really clear in the, in the redevelopment agreement for the North Mariam Bell, that that was really important, and you, you know, paying one's taxes seems to me to be a, a, a good corporate citizen. I understand you've built a lot of stuff, or you've had, you've caused things to be built in Mariam over the last 30 years, but, you know, we were real clear about it, and it doesn't seem like you really understand how, how important this was, and the tone of your letter, actually, or whoever wrote it, sort of annoys me for a couple of reasons, and I've been in business myself for 30 years, and. And I've been in business myself for 30 years, uh, and, uh, specifically, um, when we, when, we agreed to fund 300,000 of the project if the old, other projects' taxes, uh, were finally paid. The city in effect provided funding for nearly half of the back taxes. I know there are different, uh, ownership groups, but there's a lot of probably commonality in it. I don't know that for a fact, but I think, I suspect so. The letter says, "The owner of the project did not realize that the taxes were due June 1st." My understanding of state law is that property taxes were due, those, some of those taxes were due in 2018, some in 2019, some in 2020, some in 2021. And if you have a, an ownership group who doesn't want to put additional money in, um, to pay the taxes, then you run the risk of losing the property if the taxes aren't paid, you know, over a certain period of time. And that's where we are now. You, I mean, we, we, we have a situation where, as far as I'm concerned, the agreement has been breached. And so we have to make a decision on what to do. And it honestly doesn't seem to me that, I, I, there's almost a sense of entitlement because you've done so much for Miriam that you can ignore paying your taxes or your investors can ignore paying their taxes. And I find that somewhat offensive, so.
Is that a question or a statement?
That's actually, that's actually a statement.
Okay.
Is the delay, is the-
I'll answer that when you're ready. Go ahead, I would like for you to finish.
You also said, "The issue is further," or the letter said, "The issue is further compounded by the delay that has occurred while the buyer of Kmart and the city worked through a redevelopment agreement." Okay, that sounds like, uh, and you've already answered this, that you believe that that delay is partially responsible for the taxes not being paid. And maybe on June 1st, that could be true because you were linking the two together. One of the things that I feel very strongly about, and that ties to the, to the Drake Agreement, is TIF eligible expenses include cost of land. Or they could include that. And I'm, I am very adamant about not having the city finance the costs of land acquisition if back taxes are rolled into them. And there's a linkage apparently in your mind between getting the funding from the Drake Project and paying these taxes. And that disturbs me. I don't think that's a good example for any city to, to make a, 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 a practice. So I would appreciate it if you could sort of respond to my sort of feelings about this.
Well, the Drake Deal was a contract that was supposed to have closed last year. It's been extended, this council knows about it and the council before it knows about it, and the staff knows all about it. The, we've been working with the Drake Deal, as I stated before, and I want to continue to work with the Drake Deal. I think that it could be a good plan, assuming that y'all agree. It's really your call. I'm just here to, to keep that property available for Drake to buy it. He's not paying the taxes, we're paying the taxes. And, you know, uh, it sounds like if we get this extended, we're gonna have to pay the taxes before August, assuming you give us an extension without him closed, because he just asked for another 75-day closing that's gonna probably take him into later on. So I will pursue getting the taxes paid with a bank, putting another mortgage on that property for the partnerships, the LLCs that own that property. But I have, in the recent future, done multiple deals in this city. And if you're gonna go by the concept of, "What did you do for me today?", well, that's not gonna work too well because I didn't, I didn't do anything today, other than I have a building across the street. We came in on that property, first one we came in on and asked for some incentives. The original request was for a million one, I believe, and it was knocked down to 300,000 and 30,000 was paid to the city for expenses. So it's 270,000 and that deal is being built to about a four cap or a five cap. So I don't know, you probably know how many deals you do that are built to a four, five cap? Yeah, I thought so. So I would just say this, that I'm just gonna take a quick look here. Let's see, on the taxes that have been paid on non-TIF properties. Here we go on the, uh, well, by the way, you know, the Kmart taxes, which is interesting, they increased from 100,000 to 200,000.
Over what period?
Last, year before last. It was vacant, so it went from vacant, 100,000, then it went the next year. Let's see, they were 104,000 in 18 and then they went to 218,000 in 19. But you guys, that's not really your deal, right?
No, actually-
That's somebody else.
No, I'm, I'm totally-
I'm just saying that they went up, they went up. So when a building is vacant, which isn't really gonna be helpful in the future because that's been some problems with multiple other cities, if we don't keep our eyes on these taxes. Cause, uh, uh, I see here Freddie's taxes went up to 41 tax, 41,000 a year. So we've been paying taxes on that Winstedts for all those years that it was vacant and all those other years at between 20 and 30,000 a year, over 600,000 with no, no incentives of any type. So there's 600,000. We've been paying taxes on the IHOP, okay? Uh, which is not an IHOP anymore. It is a, um, you know, the, the local restaurant over there. And those are, uh, well, let's see, there are about 300,000 we paid there. We paid over $400,000 on the, uh, on the gas station that's next to the Taco Bell and, uh, another 70,000 on the Taco Bell while it's been vacant. So, and I don't mean we, I mean, the LLCs that own those properties without any incentive or any incentive ask. So this is one that we have asked for an incentive. It's good, it's a loser no matter how you do it. You know, and you all can say, "Well, that's the developer's risk." But I'm also that developer that works quite a bit in this city and have done quite a bit in this city and hopefully do a lot more, but does that answer that question?
Well, it, I mean, it's a philosophical discussion and I'm certainly happy to go toe-to-toe with the non-property taxes and TIFs.
Well, I don't think over a million dollars in taxes is philosophical.
Well, it is because you're also making some money on these projects or you wouldn't be doing them. I understand that.
Wait a second, wait, we're talking about making money and paying taxes? I thought we were talking about paying taxes.
Well, we, we are, we're also talking about, um, yeah, the funding of cities, school districts, county, Johnson County.
Which I pay for all, which we pay, all these owners pay.
And, and, you know, they, that goes to the services that are also consumed by the owner.
And they deserve them.
Uh, of the private property. But anyway, philosophically, we, we put the, um, hey, we put the Kmart property into the I-35 district, which also has some very favorable terms in terms of the increment financing. The base used to calculate the increment is 1994 value, which I'm, do you know what that is? I, I don't know, it's probably a substantially lower value. But even so, the, the point here is that we were real clear about how important this was. At least some of us felt very strongly about this. I didn't really want to provide any funding for the 300,000 that you're, you know, but we, we passed that.
But do you now then?
I don't know yet. You're part of that, part of its discussion here.
And I'm just, I've explained it to you and I've told you, you know, it's an honest mistake. Um, I will, my plan is to either Drake closes or I'm gonna have to, for this ownership, work with them and figure out how those taxes are gonna get paid within the period of time that we have discussed. Now, you've already committed to one commitment out of multiples that had no public finance. And so I asked you to consider extending this out and I feel confident that we would be able to get those taxes taken care of.
Is it not true that a number of your projects, including the auto dealerships, all were subject to TIF financing? The, those projects? So, so, so you have had-
No, 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 wait. I bought that one that was defunct. In fact, I believe it was in bankruptcy, was it not? It was in bankruptcy and was the city on the hook on that? Was the city on the hook? Okay, so basically I saved the city $9 million. No? Well, but it was a $9 million deal, TIF at the time. And now you've got a hole filled that costs $4.5 million with a new car dealer on it. And I can tell you, we spent a lot of time on that, a lot of time, and doing all those other car dealers. But that was one that had already been funded and had been done by someone else.
Mr. Mayor, I think Jason Silvers is how to stand up for a while.
Yeah, yeah, please, um, Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
And I do appreciate all that you've done to the city, for the city of Miriam in the past 30 years. I think one of the differences that we're experiencing today is, I think those company, those businesses are paying their taxes and we're talking about delinquent taxes. And in your discussion earlier, you had kind of mentioned how we are very similar to the experience that Block and Company is, um, dealing with, with this. But I just wanted to, um, read something that I wrote earlier that's very, um, very much in line with what you said because I want to bring it back to the average person because we're representing average taxpayers. And so when I purchased my first property, I knew, um, it was my contractual and civic responsibility to pay those taxes on that property, even during difficult times when I encountered unexpected expenses and found myself between jobs, I made sure I adjusted my spending to ensure I could pay those taxes. Recently, I had to purchase a new car during COVID and paid my taxes on that purchase independent of whether my, whether I was able to sell my old car, okay? So my question to you sir is, why is Block, why should Block and Company be treated differently than the average person who is expected to pay their taxes on time and get penalized if they don't?
Okay, so I'm gonna have to, uh, first answer the incorrect statement.
Okay.
Unless someone else would like to answer it, which is, I don't see Block here. I see a representative of an LLC that owns that Kmart property, three LLCs, okay? So we need to make sure that we're dealing with who owns that property. It's not Block, it's not Block and Company.
Okay, but I'm talking to you-
Now, I wanna answer you.
I'm talking to you because you're here today.
Philosophical, if I could use your word. If you had that house of yours under contract to your sister and you owed taxes on it and you lost your job and you didn't really have any money and you didn't, you didn't have a job, but you owed these taxes, but your sister was buying that house and you said, "Well, you know, I don't have the money to pay the taxes, but I'll just wait till my sister closes on it." That's the situation we're in here. We have expected Drake to close last year. It should never have taken this long. It has been a long time, has it not? Has this not been a long time dealing? November of '20, okay? We truly expected that property to be sold sometime in 2021 at the latest, sometime in '21. And we've extended and we've extended, honestly. And what I'm saying here today is, I will go out and figure out a way to get those taxes paid if we can get an extension. And I apologize for the delay in, and maybe the ignorance in the fact that we should have had that date and had more, uh, I guess, uh, priority on that date. But consistently, I have been kind of told that this deal was moving in the right direction. And like I said, I was told last week, I need to, you know, the buyer wants another 75 days. So I've been pushing it out and believe me, I don't like that. I do not like having a property for a client of our office where the taxes are not paid. You look at most, almost every property that we have, where we represent property owners, they are paid. Certain things, and this is an extenuating circumstance. I think he needs to call on you.
Mr. Neil, go ahead.
Okay. When did you start dealing with Drake on this project? Was that 2020?
The summer of 2020.
Okay, so what about 2018 when those taxes were, the first set of taxes were due? Was, what was the thinking about, about that? I mean, you're kind of blaming this on factors that-
2018 is strictly the existing LLCs and that was where we were in, uh, the throes of coming up with a new development and putting a new loan on it. We were putting a new loan on this and a new plan and they've got all the plans there and you're, you guys have got them, so they-
Yeah, I was on, you know, I was on the council at that time.
So did you see the entertainment district that we had with the bowling, movie theater and the restaurants?
Uh, I, I did.
And, uh, all kinds, a food hall that was gonna be in the building, did you see that stuff?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and it was a pretty plan. We, we met with the mayor multiple times, correct?
But the taxes probably were, what, maybe a couple hundred thousand or less at that point?
Yeah, well, at that time, they doubled, of course, because the building was vacant. And I guess that's the way they do it now. They double the taxes when they turn vacant, but I don't know how that happened.
Actually, I believe they generally go down compared to a building that's operating, but it was vacant for a while, so.
That's what I thought.
Anyway, um, but it, it just seems to me that there's a little bit of hyperbole here and, uh, you know, you've, you've, you've explained yourself and then I guess we all have to decide what to do.
Mr. Neil, hey, go ahead.
Yeah, Isaac, I just wanted to go back in touch, like, I tried to reread the development agreement. I would assume you did to prepare for tonight. You know, what, was there anything that was unclear in that January document that you signed and that Mitch agreed to on the company's behalf about the taxes being due for all properties that were affiliated through Block for both the Kmart and the North Bell LLC?
I don't believe so. I did not read it in, in preparation for this meeting, but I believe that you did. And I will say that I don't think there was anything that was unclear. But in many cities in the past, you know, when you have some issues that are for the benefit of the community, they go, "Well, let's work together, public, private, let's work together, guys." So, that's all I'm asking.
We, we all agree that you have a stake in both properties. They're not necessarily owned by you. We've, I think we clarified the semantics of what an LLC is and how you buy into an LLC and who actually owns the property. But, and I get that you expected it to have sold, that, that the Kmart property was expected to have sold before June came along and the taxes would have been paid at the time of the sale or very nearly close to it. And now we've got to our point where we're past June 1st, the taxes aren't paid, the taxes that are part of, that are part of the development agreement for the TIF money for North Bell LLC. And so now the big question is how do we go forward, right? Because we've, we've all gotten to this point, we all kind of agree that the deadline's coming past and we breached the agreement. And I think in the packet, there are a couple of options on, that, a couple of options that we could all take or we could probably modify from the podium up here. So I, I guess, what's, what's the, the takeaway from, we've all talked about community involvement, investment. I, I guess it's not really so much of a question, it's, I was hoping to get you to agree that, you know, we all had terms in January that we agreed to. And with the understanding that, yeah, we thought it would have sold and it would have not been an issue, but now we've gotten to the point where it is an issue.
Correct.
Because the property, the property taxes would have been paid when the, in order to sell or to change hands for the Kmart property.
And I think, and, and I appreciate that, and, and what I have said is that it was an honest mistake. Doesn't sound like it could be, but it was. And I think we requested to August. Yeah.
Formal request, there, um, maybe there was in the letter.
Is there in that letter? An extension?
I think the email requested an extension.
It just requests an extension, there isn't a specific date.
Yeah, and I would like to get an extension into mid-August and this is the end of June. So that would give us July and then into August and then we would pay those taxes whether he closes or not. And then the benefits that go to the Taco Bell, the other owner, could be dispersed, half of them could be dispersed. And if they're not paid, then you won't hear from me again about an obligation to the Taco Bell.
Are you through, Mr. Lahey? Okay, Mr. Neal?
You know, in our packet, there's three options. I, I think there's probably several other options, one of which is that we could decide to continue the idea of redoing or revising the North Bell funding agreement until such time as the taxes on the Kmart property are paid. That's an option also. Because right now, there isn't, there isn't any funding available until we decide that there is, that we do something else. And at this moment, I'm just not happy at all about how things are going here.
That won't work for the property owner, that doesn't work well for the property owner. We, they need to know where we're going. So, you know, and I think all you guys want to know as well, where are we going and do we have a definitive agreement? That's all. So I've asked for an extension and that's where we stand right now for the property owners, the three.
But we, we can continue it should we choose to, and that's, I'm sorry, that might not work, but.
It's still America, you can do whatever you want.
Yep.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to just interject a few things here in reference to, we've, I hate to use the terminology, beat this horse to death. But I, I think we know that there's been obviously a breach of contract, that's clear. We know that your request is for an extension. We know that you've made some obligations in reference to, which I understand that everyone up here has heard that it was going to be paid by June one, and it wasn't paid by June one. You telling us it's going to be paid by August fifteenth is still questionable, so.
Well, but you don't have to fund any money if it doesn't get paid either.
Well, and we don't have to fund any money currently as it is.
No, you don't.
So.
No, you don't.
I think staff has looked at this and given us three options in reference to going, moving forward from the council standpoint of, I think, you know, basically laid out three different ones. I could see a modification to one of those if, if nobody's completely happy with it. You know, I, I myself have looked at it. I, I think there needs to be obviously something done in reference to, we were clear about the fact that we expected this to be done by, and the taxes to be paid by June one. You're in breach, you did not do that. So getting the three hundred thousand, I don't see that happening. Now, the question for all of you in this council needs to be, do we give him anything at all? Is there a modification? Is there something in between? Obviously, we want to see this properly built, we want to, you know, and you probably build that whether we give you a dime or not. But the fact is, is that we've got to make some sort of decision here to, to die. And I, I understand Mr. Neal has talked about maybe extending this. Personally, from my standpoint, sitting in this chair, I don't want to see an extension. I want you guys to figure this thing out this evening. I want to move forward, I want Mr. Block to have an answer for the rest of the people in his LLC as to where we're going with this. Whether it be option A, B, or C, or modification of one of those, I want to try to get this worked out this evening if we can.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that.
Were we gonna have Mr. Engel come up and explain those options to us? Was that how this was supposed to go down?
Well, I, I assume that everybody in the council has read the three options. If you have any questions for Mr. Engel, we can.
That they're part of the record particularly?
Oh, well, that's true. I, I think that at this point, I.
Has Mr. Block seen the packet to see what, the examples that we're talking about?
Have you seen our, the three options his staff has proposed for City Council? Mr. Block, okay. Well, then I, I guess at this point, I, I would, I would excuse the remote, don't leave, don't leave the premises even with Mr. Engel. If you would like to come up and present those three options to the council of your staff recommendation itself of where we might go forward.
Thank you. Again, want to point out that Joe Serrano with Kutek Rock is here. Worked with him side by side on these RDAs and he has reviewed some of the sample language that's been included in here as City Attorney, Mr. Dank. So from the staff perspective, well, there may be multiple options that we could go forward. Staff really sees it as three best options, I guess, if you will, best being up to the individual if it's best. The, the situation as it exists, I think Mayor did a good job of explaining where we are. We have a, a deal that's been breached and we have to decide a path forward. I think the first option that is the clearest is we do nothing. That is an option, we do nothing. The, the city council is not obligated to revive the breached RDA. It's done, it's so that we do not, are not obligated to pay three hundred thousand dollars. And Mr. Block can move forward and how the Kmart property and those taxes play out is up to him. It's his matter, as is how he chooses to fund the Chipotle development. So I would view that as, as an option A. Option B would be to simply approve an amendment to the RDA that extends the date. Simply extend the date, whether that's thirty days, whether that's tomorrow, whether that's August fifteenth. But we would just, we've included some example language. With respect to the redevelopment agreement for the Miriam North Bell Redevelopment Project approved on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two between the city of Miriam, Kansas and Miriam North Bell LLC. Both parties do hereby agree to amend section five oh two point two B to extend the payment date for the past due taxes to, fill in the blank, twenty twenty-two. So that would be an option B, would just be to simply extend the date. Option C and the staff recommendation, keeping in mind all of the things that we have, have been articulated here, past deals that Mr. Block has performed in our community. But recognizing the political realities of the desire to have those taxes paid and the emphasis that was placed on them in January when the council approved them. And the fact that they were not done, honest mistake or otherwise, there's an option C as staff sees it. And that's to approve, approve amendment for the RDA that extends the date and to have the taxes paid and provides a penalty for not complying with the original RDA. And/or requires some additional, what's staff is calling civic obligations. As opposed to, one of the conversations that we hear that is a typical conversation is, what does the Tiff do for me? How does the, the community benefit? One of the general comments is, well, you don't have a blighted building, you've got a new restaurant, you have things like that. And well, you have a sales tax revenue, so we don't have to raise your taxes because now we have something that's generating sales tax or property tax. Those things, I think, from our perspective, staff, council, all make sense. But to Joe Q. Public on the street, the one that sometimes gets enraged over incentives and things like this, they don't quite understand that, they don't see those connections. So I think the idea of including some sort of civic obligation that, as Mr. Neal says, turns Mr. Block into a good corporate citizen. I think would be absolutely appropriate from a staff perspective, although it's up to council. So for example, as is written in the path, in the packet, with respect to the redevelopment agreement for the Miriam North Bell Redevelopment Project approved on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two between the city of Miriam, Kansas and Miriam North Bell LLC. Both parties do hereby agree to amend section five oh two point two B to extend the payment date for the past due taxes. I included July thirteenth, that's a month from now. Again, as a reminder, the Drake project will be coming forward for a public hearing on the twenty-seventh, effective on the twenty-eighth. Mr. Block would know if the taxes were going to be paid by Mr. Drake or not. But that could be modified up to council to August fifteenth or whatever date. Staff included it because it's a month from now. In addition, both parties agree to modify the maximum reimbursement amount to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Furthermore, both parties agree to add the following. Section nine hundred civic involvement, and I'm going to read all of this just so we're very clear in the record what it is. Section nine hundred civic involvement, the granting of economic development incentives is a discretionary decision of the, of the city and is granted to promote, stimulate and develop the general and economic welfare of the quality of life in the city. Therefore, civic and community involvement of any applicant receiving Tiff reimbursement is important to the city. During the Tiff project term, developer agrees to actively participate in the civic, charitable, educational, philanthropic and economic development activities of the city. At a minimum, developer shall perform the following. One, at all times during the Tiff project term as defined in section four oh two point one, which just for reference is twelve thirty-one of twelve twenty-three. So developer shall perform the following. One, at all times during the Tiff project term, be a dues-paying member in good standing with the Northeast Johnson County Chamber of Commerce, as well as being an annual chamber corporate sponsor at any level of corporate sponsorship. Two, during the Tiff project term, make an annual contribution of one thousand dollars, which is the patriot level of sponsorship, to the Marion Parks Recreation and Community Center Foundation to be earmarked for the annual Flags for Freedom event. That is the Flag Field event that occurs on the, the week of Fourth of July. Three, during the Tiff project term, make an annual contribution of five thousand dollars to the Marion Parks Recreation and Community Center Foundation to be earmarked for recreational scholarships. For those that aren't aware, recreational scholarships do the foundation or for folks that are in need can afford recreation scholarships. So you've got families and children in need that can take swim lessons and can participate in recreational activities. Four, during the Tiff project term, developer will annually sponsor a minimum of one city festival, whether that's Turkey Creek Festival or Miriam Drive Live, at the headlining, which is five thousand dollars or presenting thirty-five hundred dollar sponsorship level, be his choice. And five, during the developer Tiff term, be a financially contributing member to the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation at a sponsorship level no less than five thousand dollars. Each one of these, one through five, in this paragraph constitutes a separate performance requirement, a civic obligation. All civic obligations for the current year will be due within thirty days of the approval of this agreement. The subsequent contributions to the Marion Parks Recreation Community Center Foundation must occur no later than March one of the year. And again, this would, this deal only goes until next year, so really we're talking about these things would only be enforced in twenty-two and twenty-three. None of these civic obligations are considered a Tiff-eligible expense and none may be deducted from the annual Tiff disbursement. So Block and, Block and Core, or actually Miriam Bell North, will be required to not only pay the taxes, but honor these five civic obligations and they will be required to write a check. Now, to be clear, some of these things are tax deductible. All of these things likely come with perks of sponsorship, so Mr. Block may be able to write some of these off on his taxes. He will clearly on some of these things will receive the perks and the, you know, he's going to have his name up in bold on top of those things. So he will receive something in addition to these, he won't just make these, make these payments as currently structured. That is, that is option C from a staff perspective. We believe that that is the, the, the best option from a staff perspective.
They would also include a reduction, did you mention that?
It would have a penalty from three thousand, three hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which again is up to the council. But I'm hearing penalty and what the right amount is, so that is the staff recommendation to meet all of those things. So you would have a decrease, which would be a penalty for non-compliance. You would extend the deadline to make sure that the taxes get paid, whether that's as a result of Drake closing or just because this is the deal that he needs at the Chipotle. And he becomes a, a good corporate citizen of Miriam for the next two years at least.
Okay, Mr. Neal, you have your hand up?
Yeah, so what, in, in this options that you, just the last one, what does the total amount of penalty, the financial penalty amount to?
Sure, I don't know how many employees he has, so I can't speak for the chamber. The chamber dues would be somewhere around three hundred and fifty dollars a year. And because he would get to choose his level of corporate sponsorship, it could range anywhere from a thousand to, I think, ten thousand dollars. So I can't assume that, but the things that I do know the numbers for, this year it would be sixteen thousand dollars, next year it would be fourteen thousand five hundred. And that is, that does not include whatever the chamber.
So that's about eighty-five thousand or something like that, eighty, eighty-five?
That's like thirty, thirty thousand.
But with the fifty.
The penalty.
If you included all of that together, yes, that would be an eighty thousand.
For, you know, eighty thousand of expenditure, a penalty for failure to pay six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of taxes going back, we gave them a break. Going back, you know, had an opportunity to, to remedy the back taxes by June first, it wasn't done. I just don't feel like that's really enough of a penalty because the city and all cities around need to be, have a sharp pencil, in my opinion. And we, we just, in, in doing our jobs, at least my interpretation of my job for the residents. When offering incentives to private, privately-owned property owners and they don't pay their taxes. When every homeowner has to pay their taxes, and believe me, the, the, the property tax increase for residential owners has gone up a lot because of the increased valuations. More than commercial property by a long shot. But I, I'm not comfortable with the two hundred and fifty thousand and the incentives. I, I, you know, I think it needs to be higher than that.
Okay, I, okay, Ms. Adrich, go ahead.
What number are you comfortable with?
Honestly, I'd just as soon continue this and see the taxes get paid. But I understand that that's not, that would be a modification of option A and then see where we stand. But since we've already discussed that, I'm not, I certainly don't, I don't know the answer. But I would say probably, you, you guys suggest something and, you know, I want to see what the rest of the council thinks as well.
Oh, in the funding agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's thirty less.
Mr. Block wants to point out that we, by policy, require a funding deposit of thirty thousand dollars. So all of the work that goes into paying for Mr. Serrano, Mr. White and all of that work actually is, he paid for that. So the taxpayers don't have to pay for that, so that is per policy. He asked if I would share that with the council, that's standard.
But I'd also like to point out that we had an agreement that came out of that, a product, a finished product. And the, Mr. Block's group did not follow through with the agreement. So that's sunk cost, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I understand, Mr. Lahey, go ahead.
I'd like to, I think C is a pretty fair option for everybody. I think everybody wins a little, some people, I mean, some people don't lose as much maybe, if you want to look at it that way. But the whole point of the agreement that we talked about in December, voted on in January, was to get the taxes paid and that it was going to be an inconvenience. That was the intent, was to place the burden to have the taxes paid. Having the taxes paid through the sale to another ownership group, when that comes due, it would have been zero inconvenience if that had happened before June first. So the whole idea of asking that those taxes be paid was to impose that burden. And if the plan was to just wait for the sale of the property, it wouldn't have been inconvenience to the current owners of Kmart. So I just wanted to say that publicly, but I think C is probably a good option. I think everybody wins, I think we all can come out ahead. Block gets the tax deduction, gets the perks that come with civic involvement and becomes, as you put it, a, a company or in good standing in the community.
Sure, good corporate citizen, I took that from Mr. Neal's comment.
Mr. Neal, do you have something different to say?
Yes, I do.
All right, because we've heard your opinion.
I'd like to hear what Mr. Block thinks of these three agreements, three options.
My pleasure. I would like to say that over the period of time, the, I mean, I'd be willing to do number three, even though we end up less than two hundred thousand. When you take out what we paid and where it ends up. And I don't mind, I'm, I'm involved in multiple, Block and Company is involved in multiple Chamber of Commerce's and community activities. And we work very closely with a lot of cities. And we, in the past, have worked very closely with this city, this mayor, this council, the previous councils. I don't know how many events we've done on the Kmart, some of which were city-sponsored events, which we did not charge for. At least five a year, where there are public opportunities for people to use those parking lots. And some have been at risk because some of them have been done during the period of time that Drake has had under contract, which did put some jeopardy on the pre, the, the present LLCs that own that property. But we thought they were right for the marketplace, right for the community and right for your neighborhoods. So I don't have any problem, I have not heard what he had to say there, and I don't have any problem in making a financial commitment, whether that be for, by Block and Company or partially even by the LLCs that own that property. But I can commit to that as long as we're not going to continue to, you know, whittle down where we're already under, literally under two hundred thousand. So number three is okay, if you guys can see your way to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Block. Okay.
I have a question about, oh, Chris, I think you were going to ask the same question I did, go ahead.
Just going to be sure that that also includes paying the taxes, back taxes.
Is that the question you were going to ask too? Or?
Is that for Chris?
This is another Chris.
Okay, so option C does include paying all the taxes plus these additional by a deadline.
Right. I want to be sure that is true.
July thirteenth is what we were recommending.
It, it's written July thirteenth in the packet and I think we could amend that.
We could amend that if it was.
It's just a date to fill in, it's.
It's just a date to fill in. It's, because it was 30 days from today.
And I would say I'm comfortable with going to August 15th, since that has been requested very clearly.
Okay. Uh, just a head nod would be fine with me. Is it change of that time okay with August 15th?
Split the difference to August 1st.
Okay. I'm not sure that it's actually going to make any difference at all in Mr. Block, in the sense of that if they're asking for 60-day extension or something, that that's even going to push it out far enough. But, um, so-
Well, let's just make sure we're not back here having this discussion again, because we chopped 15 days off of it.
I would think after tonight's discussion, that Mr. Block understands that if he needs to go to the bank and borrow this money to pay those taxes, he will not be back in here for another breach of contract. So, yeah. No, I, I understand.
So I, so I am clear, we are talking about August 15th or 1st? 15th, 15th, 15th?
Yeah, August 15th.
August 15th, okay.
Because that was what was clearly requested.
August 15th is the date of option C. I would entertain a motion at this point.
I do have one more question on option C.
One more question?
I'm sorry. It's about enforcement for the civic involvement pieces. Um, Chris asked me about this earlier. I should have asked about it earlier. Um, what burden does it put on staff to make sure that these obligations are fulfilled?
Sure. That, uh, we will in 30 days, because per the terms of this agreement, all civic obligations, I mean, this is verbiage that will go in an updated agreement. So, uh, it's all, all civic obligations, uh, for the current year will be due within 30 days of approval of this agreement. So 30 days from now, I will call all these entities and make sure that, uh, all of these payments have been made.
And for 2023, will we do the same-
2023, we'll do the same thing on March 1st. And I will check in, and I'm sure that the Chamber and SMF will both, um, not forget Mr. Box's address.
Yeah, I would have one other question, Mr. Engle, in reference to, uh, currently, via the old agreement, which obviously is no longer in effect. Um, I think they would have been eligible for, now that the Taco Bell has been raised, that they would be entitled to their 150,000 or half of that number itself. Uh, my question would be, and I guess my concern would be, is that that still not be paid out until this obligation is made?
That, that would be up to the council. We, we will have, we, we have at least 30 days from when they submit to pay them for tearing it down. So we would be able to confirm that the civic obligations will be done. In terms of the taxes being paid, it is possible, it is currently written, that in 30 days, we will have honored the civic obligation. He will not have the taxes paid, and we would reimburse the 150,000 if we don't, if we don't modify that now.
Let's not make an issue out of it. We won't get the first payment till the taxes are paid.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Block. I appreciate that.
I agree. I do think it needs to be in this, in this agreement.
Bond counsel and I will change that. We will make sure that it's-
The applicant agreed, so we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Okay.
Just for a point of clarity, when we talk about past due taxes, that includes all of the interest and penalties involved with those past due taxes?
I'm, I'm fairly certain we, we defined exactly what past due taxes were in there. I'm, it's in the, I do not have the ability to do that, Mr. Block.
Um, I just want to make sure we clarify also, are we talking two payments to North Bell LLC for 125,000, or one for 150 and one for 100?
The way that the agreement is currently is it's just one-half due at point A.
I just want to make sure it's clear. So there's no confusion in a month.
Okay. Mr. Silver, go ahead.
In 2023, after, um, the Taco Bell or has been, I guess it's already been raised, and the Chipotle, um, is hopefully up and running, because I'm looking forward to that. Um, how, how are we going to ensure that the monies that we agree on today are going to be enforceable after, you know, the dust has settled and everyone's kind of moved on?
Well, the, these, the civic involvement only is during the term of the agreement. So the agreement will not expire until 12/31 of '23. So what we would do is, because I'm fairly certain they will not be open and operating by March 1, that is when they will make the foundation payment. And usually, your Chamber dues will come due at the end of the year or the beginning of the next year. So all of those things likely will be paid, but we will work with those organizations to make sure that we have some, some sort of feedback loop.
And I would also state that I think that, that you came up with a good resolution. And I think, as the applicant's representative, that, that is our duty too. We are, we are proud to make these payments towards helping this city. We've been along, around a long time, and we've been involved in the Chamber, as I recall, back before. And look, we're happy to get involved with these other issues now.
Thank you. Okay. I've seen some head nodding, and, uh, are we ready for the motion? Ms. Hands.
I am ready to make a motion. I move that the council approve an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Marion North Bell LLC to reflect option C with the modifications we've discussed this evening, and authorize the mayor to sign the amended agreement.
Can we have a motion? Mr. Chaveta, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, a second, please.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
I don't, I don't believe it's enough of a penalty, so I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-1.
Okay. Well, that was, uh, slightly painful, but we got through it. Uh, Mr. Block, we appreciate you coming in this evening and-
I just want to thank you all. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just, I want to thank you all, because we, we all have the same thing in mind. We want to do things better for this city, and that's my intent. So we'll make sure this happens. And again, thanks very much, all of you. Well, almost all of you.
All right. Thank you for attending. All right. Okay. Well, let's moving on. Uh, let's see. It looks like, consider approval of an agreement with the Department of Army for the design of the Upper Turkey Creek Project. Mr. Engels, approach in the podium.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, council. Uh, great, um, uh, great item that we have on the agenda tonight, something that I didn't think many of us thought would ever, would ever come. So super excited to be able to, uh, share this information with the council and the public. Um, downtown Marion has a history of flooding. Anybody that's read the Marion history book or lived here long enough knows that, uh, that was a regular occurrence for many, many years. A lot of businesses downtown, uh, are, are required to have floodplain insurance. They have, uh, repetitive losses down there because of the, uh, rising creek waters. Uh, the last major flood downtown was the Chiefs' flood of 1998, where the Chiefs were playing Seattle on a Sunday night. Uh, there was unfortunately a loss of life, not downtown Marion, but up on the highway. Uh, I think anybody remembers that flood would, uh, recognize and acknowledge that had that been, say, rush hour traffic on a Thursday, it could have been catastrophic for the region. Uh, so, uh, at the conclusion of the last flood in downtown in 1998, the city reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers, because they, they have a controlling, uh, interest in that creek. That is their creek. It's navigable water, even though I would argue the definition of that. Um, so starting in the early 2000s, we started a feasibility study process. That was a public process. So we had business owners downtown. We had residents. We had elected officials involved in that process to determine what is the best solution to help mitigate that flood risk downtown. As you will recall, also coming out of that '98 flood, we, um, applied for FEMA funds and bought out a bunch of homes. I think we bought out some homes at Chat Lane. We bought out some homes at Brown Park, um, to mitigate some of those repetitive losses. So we've done quite a bit of work to flood-proof our community. The one thing we haven't been able to do is fix that creek. Uh, but at the conclusion of that public process in 2015, we had determined there was a one best option. We explored several of them, that, that received buy-in from not only the elected officials at that time, but the public and the business owners. Uh, and that was a series of floodwalls and berms, or, um, levees, uh, that would go from just north of 57th, the bridge of 50, north of 57th Street, at the bus garage, south of the bus garage, all the way down to Shawnee Mission Parkway. Um, starting in 2015, that was now subject to appropriations at the federal level. The federal, uh, government was going to pay the lion's share of the construction of that. So to talk a little bit about how that split, the federal government during the feasibility, I think it was a 50-50 split. Once we move into the design phase, assuming we approve that tonight, and the construction phase, that is a 65-35 split. The federal government picking up 65% of the bill. The local, um, partner, which is the city of Marion, is responsible for 35%. However, on our side of the ledger, if you will, we have Shawnee, the, the Stormwater Management Program, used to be called SMAC, Stormwater Management Advisory Council, uh, which matches those funds at 75 cents to a quarter, 75%. So if you take the 35% and our 25% of that, we're at about 9%, a little bit less than 9% of total cost for construction. Um, we do not have a total construction cost. That is something that they are working on updating, and that is also why we have the design process. So I spell out in the, uh, uh, cover sheet, the, all of the things that this next phase will do. Kind of to talk about how we got there and how we discovered this. For those that don't know, uh, in early 2022, Representative Sharice Davids put in for, uh, an earmark, a local appropriation, for us to continue working on this, because it has been held up so long. We've submitted annually what they call 7,001 reports, which is just to say, hey, we're still interested. We still have the funding. We want to do this. Anybody that's been around since 2015 knows that every single CIP we've approved, the last three years are always the Turkey Creek money. So we've always had it. We just move it down the line, down the line, down the line. Uh, we've also recognized that, though, with the, the current administration, that if we were ever going to get funded, this was probably going to be our best bet. So actually, last year, we just kind of started moving it up by a year, which was, uh, kind of fortuitous. Uh, but we received a call from, uh, Representative David's office, saying that they had been able to get half a million dollars in the, the, in the regular appropriations bill for '22. Um, it was, um, as a result of that, that we re-engaged the Corps in conversations about it, and we were kind of talking past, uh, past each other on some of those things. And somewhere, it was kind of, what are we talking about? And it was like, well, you know, the $23.9 million that's in the infrastructure bill. And it's like, we did not know that, no. We had no clue. Uh, so, but, uh, we were able to get that, included in the infrastructure bill. So we have over $24 million, uh, to, uh, of federal funding to put towards that project. We've reached back out to the Corps, um, and we are, we've had several meetings with them. We're kind of still in the propping this thing back up. We've got a lot of people that weren't around in 2015. A lot of people have retired, migrated to other positions. So everybody's kind of got to get up to speed. Um, we, um, you know, there, things have just changed a little bit. Inflation, what's the cost of this thing? There's a bunch of questions that we don't have answers for, and that's what we're going to spend the next two years hopefully figuring out. So, uh, the next step in this process is, is planning and design. This is the design agreement with the U.S. Army, uh, to design the Upper Turkey Creek process, uh, project. Should, should last, this, this phase should last until December of '23. Uh, so we will validate a lot of things that are in there. We'll look at, see what has changed on the ground. What, is there a reason it hasn't flooded since '98? This might be the longest period of time it hasn't flooded. So they want to know why. Have the flood maps changed? Have some of the, some of the things that happened down on Southwest Trafficway, some of those repairs, has that helped? Uh, so we need to, we need to get some more answers. Um, and this will, this will lend itself to that process. At the conclusion of this process, we'll be at 35% plans, and we will move from there to what they call a, um, project partnership agreement. And that will, again, will be us as the local match with the feds and, but with our partners, the Stormwater Management Program. Uh, the total cost of the current project's $1.4 million. Uh, the local match is $490,000, 122,500, which will be, 122,500, which will be ultimately our portion of it. We will pay the entire $490,000, and we will bill the county. And we've been told by them that they're good for it. So, um, happy to answer any questions about that. I think I did just point out that, uh, we don't have a whole lot of answers. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions that folks downtown have. There's going to be a lot of questions that people up and down the creek, and just from a general, hey, what is this all about? You know, it's been five or six years since we really talked about this. Um, so, uh, we have created a website, www.marium.org backslash UTC, Upper Turkey Creek, uh, project. So backslash UTC project. Jenna's done a great job, communications team, of uploading the information that we already have. We are working in tandem with the Corps' communication folks to make sure that we're managing expectations, where the things that we put out there are relevant in the most recent copy. You can imagine, after 15 years of doing the study, and after the last seven years, there's a lot of weird stuff floating around online if you Google Upper Turkey Creek. So we're trying to do our best to make sure that we have the most relevant, most recent, and most accurate information on there. Most of what we'll have on there is more information coming soon. Please check back later, because we just don't have a whole heck of a lot of answers right now. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Engle?
I just have a quick question. So as part of the design process, do we have, like, milestones as part of what we, what this agreement entails, like, that we'll see as they're progressing?
They, they do, yes. I mean, because they're, they're managing the process. All we're really doing, writing a check. There, there's a few things that we'll do. Um, but most of it's, a lot of it's validation. I mean, a lot of it, it's scope validation. It's going back, there's a core samples that are included in this. There's contours that they've got to re, uh, re, um, survey. So, yeah, there, there's quite a bit. So they have a process, but even they're still putting that together, because what we don't know is, as I kind of alluded to, has something changed? It's been a long time since it's flooded downtown, and that can't, and, and as Mr. Neal likes to say, we're having more severe-
Rain.
-isolated rain events. You would think that that is the nature of what most of the floods downtown have been from, and it's not flooding. Why? So, so do we need the project that is outlined in the feasibility study? We don't know. Because if we don't need it, why should we spend X-
Right.
-tens of millions of dollars to do it?
Agreed. What's the, I guess, what's our involvement as the governing body slash staff? Like, what is that? What do they report back to us? When do they report back to-
We're just going to have an open dialogue with them, where we sit in, just kind of like in, where we get together in progress meetings. Hey, where are we at? What are we doing? What are we doing next? I mean, a lot of it, a lot of it's, they're doing the work. I mean, we're really kind of just funding a local portion of it, because it's their waterway. So they really kind of view this as it's, they, they have the money to fix their creek.
Yeah, understand.
So, yeah, so we're, we're going to help them in any way that we can, which a lot of it's going to be giving them things that we have, or giving them ideas, because, you know-
Their city.
Right. Some, because a lot of them are new. They just don't know, like, oh, hey, what, when I had, I met him on the, uh, at the marketplace and said, well, you know, the, down at Southwest Trafficway, when they fixed that 10 years ago. What, what? And I said, oh, yeah, you got to go look at that. That's totally, that's not what that looked like in '98. So a lot of it's just kind of giving them what's changed from our perspective.
One last part of that. How often, or do you know how often he would bring stuff back to council, just to share what's going on with us?
Uh, it, well, anytime we have something that, you know, is relevant or meaningful, we will share it. I mean, we will update, update that website as stuff becomes available. I don't think we'll be bringing forward any agreement again until the end of '23. But, yeah, we will, I mean, I, I can imagine as we learn things and as things kind of shift from what we think the project's going to be, we're, we're always going to include things like that in our updates.
Mr. Neal, go ahead.
I just want to reiterate that I think your comment is very well, um, something to remember, that this, we really have to do this design phase, which is the funding here, in order to know what we have to do. And maybe we'll end up saving some money in the, in the, in the long run, because I do, it is a bit suspicious that we haven't had flooding, and the downstream work may have significantly impacted. But either way, this is well invest, this is money well invested to find that out even, and remove those, uh, all those properties from the, hopefully from the floodplain.
That'd be ideal.
So, I-
Any other questions for Mr. Engle? Mr. Leahy?
I had one real quick. I wanted to talk about the way the money all works. So the initial money that we knew about was the half a million dollars. Does that kind of get lump summed into the 23.9?
Yes. So, great question. So the, the federal share is, I think, 910. The first 500 paid is the, what we're calling the Davids 500. It's the, it's the, it's the earmark that Representative Davids, uh, was able to secure for us. So that's included in the federal money. That, that will, that's kind of the first, that was first in, it'll be first out.
Okay.
So, so of the 23.9, they're, they're, they won't hit that until they've spent the half million dollars first.
So it's 23.9 total?
Twenty, it's 23.9 plus-
Okay.
-the 500,000.
The last one, you're requesting, you know, $490,000, which we expect to get three-quarters of back?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because the agreement, because our agreement is with the Corps, so you will not see, and then we have a separate agreement for, for SMAC, for Stormwater Management.
Any other questions, Mr. Engle? Okay, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Neal, go ahead.
Um, I move that the council approve an agreement with the Department of the Army for the design of the Upper Turkey Creek Project.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? Okay, Ms...
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Ms. Yodrich, seconds. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chivetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye, and I'm just amazed that I've stuck around long enough to have this happen.
Motion passes 8-0.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Okay, it looks like our next item up is sustainability policy additions to the governing body rules and council policies. Okay.
All right, hello. Jennifer Jones-Lacy, Assistant City Administrator. Tonight before you, we have a couple of policies, and these are initiatives that were put together by the city's Green Team, which formed last year. And our efforts are to make the city more sustainable. We're working to follow the Climate Action Plan that has been pushed into the region. And the first two items that we come before you for your approval tonight are the Complete Streets Policy and the Idle Reduction Policy. We're recommending that this become part of the council policies, and the reason for that is we want to really consolidate all of our policies into one location, because right now, we have some administrative regulations that exist out there, and then we have a council policies, we have the personnel policies. So, rather than having all of these disparate policies, we want to bring them together into this council policy document that Julie spent so much time reworking last year, and we'll add this as basically under the heading of Sustainability Policies as number 11. So, give you a brief overview of what those are. The Complete Streets Policy basically states that anytime we have street infrastructure improvements, staff will work to incorporate elements of complete streets into that policy. So, it's not to say that every single component of a complete street will go into each project, but that will be a goal, is to include those components into each policy, or into each project as financially feasible and feasible based upon its location. And so, that is going to be labeled 11.1, Merriam Complete Street Policy, and that's actually attached in your packet as well, for the full explanation of what all of that entails. And that's, you know, things like bike lanes, curb cuts, those types of things, sidewalks, accessible curb ramps. And then, the second policy is the Idle Reduction Policy, and the goal here is to reduce engine wear and tear, as well as reduce the amount of emissions that's going into the atmosphere. And so, the policy states that city vehicles will not, are not allowed to idle for more than five minutes at a time, with a maximum of 15 minutes every hour, with certain exceptions specifically for public safety vehicles, or when there's maintenance being done, and then some other listed exceptions. And so, that would be labeled as 11.2 Idle Reduction Policy, which is also included in this attachment. The Green Team is working on several other items right now, and there are some additional policies that may come down the pipe that would fit within this general heading of Sustainability Policies. But, these two are ready to go for you guys to review and hopefully approve tonight.
Do you want to have any questions for Ms. Jones-Lacy? Okay, Mr. Silver's, you're up.
Does our Public Works Department ever have to hire additional help from third-party companies, and will they be held to these emissions, the idling policy? Or is it just city vehicles?
It's city staff-specific, right? So, this is not extending to contractors. It's just for our internal use.
Okay, go ahead. Ms. Hands.
We touched on maybe having a pledge for employees. Are we pursuing that or not?
So, what we would like to do is include this with each person. So, in each vehicle, make sure that it's in that vehicle, so that people are aware of it. I mean, we're going to share this with our staff as well, but have it readily available within each vehicle, and also have people actually commit, you know, sign it, possibly keep a copy in their personnel file. We have the new system, the new HR system with UKG. So, we've investigated, you know, can we keep all of this stuff? Because we're trying to, you know, eliminate paper, Green Team here. So, if we can somehow put it within that, you know, system, to say that there's some sort of electronic signature, so we'll kind of look into those things. But, yes, we would like to make sure that somebody is actually, you know, abiding by these policies, or stating they at least have read it, you know, to our knowledge.
Which prompts my question, is how will that be enforced?
So, essentially, will be up to the directors to, you know, do their best to ensure that it is in fact happening. And a lot of it is going to be based on, you know, just, you know, we're going to trust our staff to want to pursue these policies, because it's ultimately best for the city, it's best for the community, and this is something that we're committing to as part of our values essentially, and we know that it's a value of the council too. So, a lot of it will be on our policy, but the directors will have some, you know, ability to rectify if they know that there's a violation.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Jones-Lacy? Okay, no other questions? Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
And I would love to make one.
Ms. Hands.
I move that the council approve Section 11.0 Sustainability Policy as part of the governing body rules and city council policies.
Do we have a motion? I'd entertain a second. Okay, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chivetta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes 8-0.
There you go. Looks like our next item up is a June CIP update. Director McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. See if I can find this on here. It's locked.
How was your trip to Mexico?
It was Jamaica.
Jamaica.
Oh, Yabon.
Yabon. You look tan.
Yes, it was nice. I didn't want to come back.
You are on island time, are you?
Was it cooler there than it is here?
It was 85 there, but the sun sure is hot.
Well, thanks for bringing all that humidity back with you.
You're welcome.
I'm grateful.
Yeah, I couldn't bring anything else back, so. All right, good evening. I have our June CIP update. The West Frontage Road Project, the utilities are in the process of relocating. Miles excavation has started clearing the creek channel on both sides of the West Frontage Road Bridge for the channel repairs, along with the installation of the pedestrian bridge on the north side. If you haven't been down that street recently, it's, they cleared it. You can see the trailhead. It looks nice. It looks really nice what they've done so far. The project has substantial completion date for November 18th on that project. The 55th Street Improvement Project, BHC Engineering, is finishing the design of the 55th Street Project, which is Merriam Drive to West City Limits. We have received 25 of 35 temporary construction easements. Our Rightofway Council continues to work with the remaining property owners on obtaining those. Kansas Gas has officially completed the replacement of the gas main on portions of 55th Street. And Evergy is in the process of obtaining utility easements for the relocation of their power poles. We anticipate going out to bid on that project late June, early July.
Before you leave that project, I'm quite surprised that that number has stayed so steady. There's no wiggling around, no?
There hasn't been anything yet. They've, everyone's received another letter from the Rightofway Council last week, and we're hoping some more will jump on the bandwagon to sign those.
Okay, thanks.
Have the 10 holdouts.
Yeah, you have a question, Ms. Yodrich?
Yes, about the Hocker Mill and Overlay Program. And I think, Chris, I've asked you about this too, and I'm sure Jim's involved, but we have a leak in the street on Hocker and Knox, and we brought it up a couple of times. I don't know if you've heard back from Water One, or what the deal is on any progress.
Yeah, Water One has been contacted. That's actually a leak on Knox, so it's not on the new asphalt pavement.
Right, it's like just across.
Right, and it's not substantial for Water One's priority.
Can't wait for them to realize when it is substantial.
Yes, they put them on our list, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. I have a lot of people who live on the street that are asking about it as well, so.
Yeah, we've notified them. I think it was last week when it came up, and then Todd called them again today, and they said it's on our list.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you.
So, the Mill Overlay Program, the streets included that were Hocker Drive, Farley Street, from 55th Street to 57th Street, West 57th Street, Wed Street Place, and 66 Terrace, which is Timber Ridge Villas. Phoenix Concrete has replaced all the substandard curbs and majority of the sidewalk sections throughout that project. There are a few that they have not completed with the ADA ramps, and they're planning on finishing those this week. All the asphalt work has been completed. We are waiting on a date for striping, which would also include the bike lanes on Knox, which is part of this project. They're also currently working on backfilling between the curb and the sidewalk sections, along with the trail connection from Hocker to Warner Park, and they're going to make, pour that concrete hopefully next week. And the final one is the Merriam Drive Street Improvements, which is the Merriam Drive from Johnson Drive to 55th Street. BHC is currently working on the design. We're in contact with them and the utilities, just to see, they plan on doing any movements and anything with, moving the water line, just to work with them to get that taken care of as part of this project. And that's all I have on this. You got any questions?
Any questions for Director McDonald? I see no questions. It looks like you've done a great job.
Thank you.
All right, well, of course, we just, informational item for the Park and Rec Advisory Board Minutes. And I know Director is local, but you have any questions for her? Don't see any. Looks like you're off the hook, okay. Do we have any executive session or anything, Mr. Engel? Anything, or other staff items?
Just two items real quick, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Park and Rec staff, volunteers for Brown Park. It was the family fun day at Brown Park. It was fantastic. It had been a long time since I'd been to one. I don't think we'd had one in a couple of years. Volunteers, great. Scott Diebold was out there sweating the grill, and, you know, it was a great event. So, thanks to Park and Rec staff and the volunteers and everybody who was able to attend. Then, wanted to remind council that we have a ribbon cutting at Reed Hyundai on Thursday, June 23rd at 8:30. That's down on West Frontage. That's the new Hyundai dealership that Mr. Black, on several occasions, told you that